I mean, I'm going to buildings where I can't see.
Yeah, you've got a building built over a cellar and you've got to go in and inspect the cellar.
Yeah, whether it be new construction, whether it was because the power's not turned on yet, or going to an old building.
Yep. And there's no lights in the cellar.
Right. Also... So I think you get the gist of it. And then my dues and subscriptions. I went from $2.50 to $4.50. I did that because I'm now a member of the ICC and that's $135 a year to be a member of. The way you benefit that firm is the same way you benefit from your MMA. You get all the updates, you get training, the latest code changes. And because you are at Main, anything that MUBIC has proposed changes.
How much of a budget have you taken this last year anyways? You're already working on a small budget type budget.
I didn't take any decreasing money.
Oh, you didn't?
No.
Oh, I thought we could take it in that one too.
No, no.
I'm sorry, I was misinformed.
Nope. In miscellaneous, I said miscellaneous updates, it's important to have the all-year connections. You know, like code changes, that's what I do for a living. So if I'm going out in the field, I'm gonna give somebody something, I better, I better know what I'm talking about. I don't want to have some contractor say, "What's the matter with you? It was just changed here." I'm not gonna put myself in that position. And those are the increases that I come in for. Anybody got a pen? Pen?
Hey Mike, some ways you think you can put in, how about you take in?
Uh, you can make sure right now. Excuse me.
I don't know what the other guy.
We can't, everybody's getting something that's not good.
I never had colds until two weeks ago.
The first year I had a flu shot, I got like full cold.
You know, this is for walking, maybe, ooh, windy, really good.
Yeah?
So his first item is only $91 difference increase on wages.
So my intake for this year in buildings, I didn't get a chance to add the violations, but the buildings were $48,338 and the plumbing was $14,595.
$14,000 what?
$14,595 for plumbing alone.
And construction was?
$48,338.
And if I get the figures right, you've only, your, all your increases total here is only $1691.
Yeah.
That's how much you?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Overall?
Yes, that's all it is, yep. I haven't had as much attention since I started here.
Um, I do have a question.
Yep.
Um, just asking because...
Ask away.
Um, under office equipment, do you expect to have any office equipment? Because you've only spent $32.93 and we didn't change it at all.
Right, the reason why I don't want to change that, what happens if I need a computer?
Well, I know it's gonna be more than 500, I'm just...
I don't think it'll be more than 500, um, because we're only talking the, the computer itself, not the keyboard, the monitor. And don't forget, if I don't use it, it goes back into the general fund anyway.
Oh, I know.
So... But it's a very vital tool that you need to have. And last year I lowered my travel expenses, as you can see. So, um, I think I'm right on track of, because we're about a half a year now, so I think I'm right on track with that.
You are.
I think I've been very frugal with my budget.
You must have used up most of your development channel. Just the rest of you, that must have had one. Where do you... Classes?
Well, a lot of my classes, some of the classes cost money to go to.
Right.
A lot of them are not. They're free if you're an acting or an appointed CEO.
Yeah, okay.
But say we get into an area that I feel I need more education on, and we have to sign up for a class, then yes. I mean, I've already exceeded my, my entire budget with what I've taken in.
I know.
Yeah.
And that's as of 2016. We already have some on the records for 2017 already. And it doesn't cover any violations either, I just hadn't added those up yet.
I'm good.
I don't have any more questions on that budget. Looks good from here.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
No fights?
Oh, Mike?
Oh, thank you.
They tried to save the ducks. They tried to save the duck.
Summer camp recreation?
Not yet. What time is it? I want to stop at 6:30. Okay, so she won't, she'll be here at 6:30, so I have some things that you guys can...
So do I.
Go over.
Thank you. There's two abatements I need to go grab. If you know what's in there.
I'm stealing your seat while you're gone.
So I have a quick claim deed. This is, this is regarding, I don't know if you've all heard about this one, that Jordan had talked about. Somehow these, the tax lien didn't get released in 2002. So, but the taxes have been paid continually throughout the years. But now they're trying to sell the property and because those tax liens weren't released, the lawyer said he wants a quick claim deed from the town saying that, um, we don't have any interest in it. And when they first mentioned it, we said, "Well, we don't even own it, so why would we quit playing it?" But I guess it's got something to do with you...
What's our lawyers have to say about this town?
Well, it has nothing to do with lawyers, it has to do with two liens at work.
You've got a lawyer telling you that it's gotta be done. What's our lawyer saying about it, does anybody know the answer?
I can give you the answer for doing foreclosure. Because the foreclosure matures automatically. And that's all that is, is two lien releases, that two discharges that weren't discharged in the system in Alfred. But they've been paid, so we didn't discharge them when they should have been discharged in 2001, 2002.
I'd still like to know what the legal, what our legal department thinks about that, because we've got another lawyer telling us we have to do this. I prefer to know that it was, that it was agreed on by the town lawyers too. Before we just go ahead and jump in and assign them something we shouldn't.
But it's not, it's not anything that's going to cause any issue.
It's covering somebody else up here that they made a mistake back along, it's clearing that up.
Yes, well, that happens all the time, people have to clear up the mistakes that get made.
I think I'd still rather have here an answer from our lawyers on it.
I don't believe it needs to go to the lawyers, but because I know how the foreclosure process works. What do you think, Paul?
You can take it to a lawyer if you want him, but make sure it goes on the record.
It's a quick claim that, that just needs to happen so that way they can sell them, so they can get their... They're selling the property and they can't sell it because this is...
Fine, whatever they're doing. When somebody comes in and says we've got a lawyer telling us what we're gonna do, then we need to be asking our lawyer what we should be doing. And maybe something hidden here that we don't realize.
But didn't, was anybody, did anybody speak to MMA or anything about it?
No, we can't send a note to MMA.
I thought, okay, because I...
Well, Jordan may have.
But I thought you had spoken to somebody because, because we thought we didn't need to do it, but then it's just a...
No, Jordan has, Jordan has talked enough about it, it's just a formality, declare that, record it up.
So do you think he talked to MMA?
He might have.
All right, so I'll ask him. So if Jordan talked to MMA and they said that, yes, it was okay...
I'll take the word from our lawyers, whatever they would say. Phone calls would be sufficient.
So who's gonna call them?
I will if you want, if you want, tell them with it.
I don't, I mean, I'll call them if you want, I don't, it doesn't matter to me, I just don't understand why, if MMA says it's, it's not a problem, why you have to pay the lawyers?
I don't know why you're questioning me on that, so...
Okay. So who do I call, Mary or Ann?
You can ask at the desk if you need to. Or you can let me handle a call tomorrow, or I can do it.
That's all right, no problem. Okay, I have Tom Tippy coming on the 20th.
Yep.
To do all the portions from the D's. He's the mapper. And he's coming in to, I've collected what I can and I have quite a few, so he's gonna do all those.
That's all you, you're going to D's and all that sort of thing?
Yep. Okay, so I got a call from Kristen at Colonial. And there's a piece of property that appears is going to be foreclosed on.
A mobile home?
A mobile home. But Colonial owns the property that the mobile home is on, 62 Upper Middle Road. They sold the mobile home, I have a copy of the bill of sale. Excuse me, and what they want to do is they want to pay, Colonial wants to pay the taxes on the garage that's on, on that piece of property, because they originally put the garage on the piece of property. And then they put a mobile home and sold it to this guy, but they only sold him the mobile home, which is what it says in the bill of sale. So she's asking if they can pay the taxes on the mobile, on the garage only.
How will we send the bill, or how do we send the bill?
Well, it's all one bill.
Oh.
It's, it's included in his bill, I don't know...
Oh, it's included in the mobile home bill?
Yes.
Which it really probably shouldn't have been.
Because I didn't, I mean, we wouldn't know this unless, like, they addressed us with it now. So I don't know if you want...
So part of the best way would, should be doing it as, like, doing an abatement, because it shouldn't even be there, it should be on, and do a supplement on, on, on Wallingford's property. Because if it's Wallingford's garage, it should go on his property.
Right.
So I do an abatement on, on one, a supplement on the other. And Ben's giving me a thumbs up, so I must be all right, so...
Okay.
Take a picture of that.
All right.
So you do an abatement on...
Yeah.
And that way it'll be in there correctly.
Right.
And then they'll get a supplement, so they'll get the bill that way.
Yep.
However, we bill them for that piece, it must be on a separate bill, right?
It is, yes.
Yeah, so we just add that.
Yep, okay. I will do that. Oh, I got an email from Cam Garrish today saying that if you guys, if the selectmen find the oldest residents to let her known, she'd be happy to do a legislative sentiment. Has there been any word on that?
I haven't heard anything.
Okay, I haven't heard anything, I don't know if they don't have...
Some requests will now again this week.
Okay.
Oh, they'll be going out shortly.
They went out this week.
They did?
Dated September.
Dated in September?
Just saying.
Okay.
Got it.
Have we been waiting that long for, for the mail to go through?
No.
Oh, okay.
Yes. So I, I got, and that, this is more for Dan Behan, but it's just a, um, loss control visit that was paid to him by MAMAC. And it's the results of that, so if you guys want copies of it, I can make copies for you.
Yes, please.
Has Dan reset his schedule for the year about his budget? Has he come to you, he's got, we gotta reseat him on his budget. He was going back over it with Jordan and I didn't know if he'd touch base with you.
Okay, didn't you meet with him?
Yes, but he needs to go over, he thinks with Jordan, I want him to go through that.
Oh, no, I haven't heard anything about it. No, yeah, I haven't heard anything. Um, okay, so then I had a question brought to my attention. Well, we, up until last year, we never taxed the parsonage at the Lebanon, North Lebanon. That's the one on Baker's Grant Road. Um, and then Ben realized that we weren't doing that, so we taxed him, but I made a mistake and didn't change the address, so we got the bill back to us. So I sent the bill out to the church. And I talked to Paul Filbert, because he, he sent me an email about it and I told him, I explained to him how, you know, I said, "I don't know why, we never did, but we just never did." Um, and he, he read the law, he knows that parsonages get taxed. But then he questioned whether or not there were any others in town, and I'm not aware of any. But he did mention the Lebanon Academy. Now, I'm, I'm, I understand that that's owned by the church over in West Lebanon.
I think so.
And we're not taxing the Lebanon Academy either. And I don't know how we would tax it, because it's not a parsonage.
I don't know.
It's, we've ne, and they've never paid taxes either, it's always been under the name of the town.
Have you asked Ben, have you talked to him about?
No, I mean, I just got this information this afternoon, so...
Maybe you should brush it across and see what he thinks.
Okay.
About.
All right, I will.
Because I wouldn't have any idea.
Okay. All right. And then, um, then the last thing is, I don't even know where to go with this. And I'll talk, I guess I'll talk to Ben about it, or I was gonna call somebody at Main Revenue. But, oh, actually, I was gonna talk to Mike first. But we could have a big issue, there's somebody that bought a piece of property that was in tree growth. And he never put it, never put it in tree growth under their name.
Oh.
He had also cut off a bunch of the...
Oh.
So he came in today and I told him, we had had a discussion about it. And I said, "You need to do something." And he hasn't done anything. So I told him that, this was before I knew that he had kind of cut a whole bunch. And I said, you know, "There's a penalty that has to be paid, I have to talk to the selectman, because now you're over the year and we haven't, you know, nothing's happened. And you didn't come back and didn't do something and, and we didn't do anything. So I have to figure out what, what's gonna happen." Well, then he said, "Oh, well, I cut, I did a bunch of cutting when I first moved there." I said, "Well, you can't do that with a tree growth plan in place." So I, I don't know what to do, I don't know what to do about it.
You better hand it to Mike, he handled a similar case a lot.
Well, he handled this case, part of this case.
Is this the same one?
It was the DEP part of it.
Did she get this?
Yes. And so I, that's why I said I was gonna talk to him again first, but it's still got, we've still gotta figure out the tree growth side of it and what you need to do. Well, I, I kind of figured out what the fine was if it was just a normal situation and he was taking it out of tree growth. But where he went and did all this cutting and did something against the plan, I don't know what happens. I have no idea. I don't know if that's a good time to handle that, I have to let the state, no, I mean, I've never come across this.
Well, I think they'd contact the state, because if it was in tree growth and now he's, never put it back in tree growth.
Number one, he didn't change his name with either a new forest management plan or the same forest management.
So if he, at that point right there...
He cut.
Yep. But at that point right there, if he didn't put it back in tree growth is where his penalty is gonna be. And then from then on, I think if he cut it, if they took it out, that's fine, they can pay that penalty. I mean, if he cuts it after that point, then he...
Yeah, but he did, he cut it before it got taken out of tree growth. Well, so I don't know if it's just, okay, you're just gonna get that straight fine for, you know, that's what I have to find out.
No.
So I'm just giving you guys a heads up.
Well, I'm talking like, but I talked to the state too about tree growth.
I will.
Yeah. Because he's gotta have some sort of penalty there, because...
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So, okay, so I'll do that. Okay. That's all I have.
Well, there's two abatements for Ben, but I don't know if I'll take this, should I yet, Shirley? Can you just read these?
Yeah, Georgie's here.
No, Shirley was not.
Oh, Shirley.
Let me just do these two abatements.
Yeah, I don't see Sharon. Watch yourself, so, in which trip. Watch out, George.
Seemed good to you?
You can have my seat, that's all right. I'm like, "You can have it." I'll sit over here. How was everyone's Christmas?
Just not by you, okay?
Good. That's all, good.
All right, so we're gonna do rec now?
Yep.
Do you have a copy?
Nope.
Would you like a copy?
I'd love one.
I was gonna try to tell Jordan to, but I've been out straight.
So you wanna just go right down through here? All right, just go from the top right down through personal services. See a request $1,400?
Yes.
Yes. $200 increase probably for some of the time you plan.
Yep.
Yes. When you pay real taxes. Supplies such as, oh, you went down on supplies? Requested, requested. Was it because you got the bunny suit now?
It is cute, it's great, because all the kids like that, they'll pitch a tank on them too.
Yeah.
I was trying to, I like my, seemed to suit up to my neighbor, and I haven't received it back in the past couple of years and it's like, "Oh, what am I gonna do with that?" But I don't have anything there yet. He wore it a couple of years ago, one of the Halloween things.
And outside services such as?
That is like, um, bounce house. I did tricky dick before and this year I'm trying to find, um, animal encounters. I'm trying to see if they'll come and stuff like that. They've given me a quote, something like, "A hour session, we'll do different animals and things." Trying to change up a little bit, because you know how kids are seeing tricky dick, um, how many years?
Yeah.
Many years. So, trying to get that, so that's a little bit bigger and stuff.
Good. So you had a success with your Halloween?
That was great.
How many kids were there?
Um, over 700.
Yeah, that was one line. They kept coming and coming and coming out, I think the line was over, not a go.
Yeah, they did act.
Um...
And I had a full parking lot just about too, so...
Yes, you did, it was good. It was good.
It keeps getting bigger.
What's going on with, with the subsidy there? We were getting 2015 and now it's nothing this year. What was the story on that?
What is it? Down in Barrow, summer camp subsidy.
Was that from the...
Oh, that's from, that's not from me.
No, that's not her at all.
Something that's not even a subsidy, is it?
Nope.
That's a long time ago, they used to get something from, um, York, Australia.
Right, when they used to get the grant and stuff like that, yes. That was a summer camp program.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything different planned this year on top of what you usually do?
Doing community festival again in the same year. Um, because we did that in August last year and we're doing it May, so it's like in the same, like...
Circle, yeah.
Yeah. The only thing I'm trying to do that's different is the animal thing, like the Easter thing. So I'm waiting for them on that. She gave me a call, I think it was like two something, so I'm trying to see what else I can do with them. Gotta go up with something different. I've talked to Janet Hassan, Hason, Hassan, the boss right there. She does balloon things, so I've been watching her do things and she, uh, was at the craft fair and she had them. So she said she would do something too. I just don't know if kids are gonna be, you know, on, on that one compared to maybe doing a show for them. But tricky dick is, I wanna say I've had him for what, three years, four years? Uh, they've all seen the same thing. So, um, really, that's it. I tried doing a winter carnival, it didn't work out. A couple of us have talked about doing like the old carnival. We used to be able to, um, do certain things you can't do anymore because insurance companies won't pay for it, you know? Like on school property, you can't even play Red Bright Rover, you know, some Rover Rover. Um, you can't play, you know, the...
Kickball?
Well, not kickball, but... Yeah, yeah, you can't do that, you can't do the wheelbarrow. Insurance, I'm like, "Oh, my God, that would kill many of us." Um, so it's, it's certain things you can only do over there with the, with the insurance thing. I remember years ago, we were talking about doing like an ice skating thing, perfect. Insurance won't pay for it. Um, the animal thing does have an insurance binder that goes with it. They don't charge for anything that, like a traveling thing, because they're, you know, within the mileage, they're right there in Manchester. Someone else told me about another animal thing in Gray, so I wanna check out them too. Otherwise, that's really it. I'd be saying on the Halloween and...
I just have a question, Georgie, anything for anybody older than 10?
No, it's more than 10-year-olds that come to...
Well, I know, the Halloween was awesome.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just saying, like, any program, like card night or board, I mean, I don't know, anything for anybody?
They're used to game nights.
Yeah.
And as far as I know, they still do game nights.
They do? She didn't mention it at all in her proposal yesterday?
She usually does like in the winter and stuff like that, they usually do a game night, like different board games down there and stuff, so, I mean, where do you want me to have it? I mean, where do you want me to have it? That's the whole thing.
I know.
Schools use for wrestling and ba- um, not basketball, wrestling and Boy Scouts. The, the library is used for everything else in the library. There's no place to do it.
Goes there.
Right.
Yeah, no, just curious, so, uh, one of the things that, you know, I get a lot of questions and one of the repeating questions is, anything for anybody older than ten?
There's just, there's no place to do anything. It's gotta be outside. Whatever you're doing, it has to be outside, really. I mean, PTO does the inside of the gym. They sign the waiver for that. Not me, I'm outside. I have no thing.
Yeah.
They do their own candy. They do their own baked goods. They do everything. I'm just outside.
And they have, uh, they don't have like a classroom space where you could do anything or nothing, huh?
Trying to get room just for a Girl Scout?
No, I have no clue.
It's, it's insane.
Yeah.
You have to, cause none of the teachers wanna give out their classrooms. There's no room in the classrooms.
Right, because then you worry about somebody messing with their stuff and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and I mean, over there, you've got Kid Connection that runs to the end of night until five thirty. You have YK that goes until six, I think, or six thirty. I think it's six. So there's no gyms.
Yeah.
You know, Tuesdays, they do volleyball.
Both of the gyms are, are u- are used like all the time?
Yep.
Crazy.
Wrestling starts up right after, uh, the first week of, of the crack event. So, I mean, first week of November and that's when wrestling comes in. They're there until, I wanna say, April? March or April.
Yeah. Just wondering, because people are asking if there is anything, because it's winter now and we have all these people with nothing to do and they'd like to participate in something, you know, a community activity and there is none, so.
I would suggest talk to Marcy about game night because I know she does it. I just don't know what night she does it on, whatever night.
I will, because she didn't, uh, she didn't mention that in her program. She was at her budget last night, so.
Yeah. She used to do that all the time. Um, I can't imagine her not doing it unless, nobody shows. But I mean, you can set up things. I did a winter carnival once. I had one family show.
Yes.
They're not gonna do it unless, sorry, unless something's given out to them, the way you look at it sometimes.
Free and fun. Free and fun.
All I know is that Halloween thing is like huge.
It was the best.
Huge, they're there and there.
Do an awesome, awesome job.
It was the best.
It's so fun to see the different things. Next year, he said he was gonna put garment. I heard it, right?
You need another clown.
I. Why? I mean, it's very interesting. I think we had these, no, we didn't have any clowns last year.
No.
No clowns.
No, last year was bad.
Right, it was.
Bad year for clowns.
So we did have some interesting outfits on there.
I just don't want your trip on that, Ben. Thanks, Ben.
I'm good with the budget.
You can stand on it.
You guys are good with it?
Thanks, George.
You're welcome.
Thanks, George.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
See ya.
Yeah, Shirley.
Come on in, Shirley.
Hi, Shirley.
Sorry.
I'm coming.
Do you have a copy of your budget?
Nope. I gave it to everybody two months ago. Oh, well, that one yet.
Okay, so we wanna go right down through here, regular wages. There's a little increase, but that's probably staff and.
That's minimum wage.
Oh, yes, that's right.
I, I've got a minimum wage, everybody up. I don't feel I should bring somebody in off the street and have them making more than the people I've had working for me for years.
Cause if I heard it right, it's what, ten dollars or something, an hour and a half?
Everything went up a dollar and a half.
Yeah.
So that's why I went up on my request.
And how many do you really usually have for staff, depending on how many kids?
Yes, it's eight to one.
Any supplies?
Tried to keep everything as close as I could. I was told I should try to stay as close as I could each year, so that's what I'm trying to do. Um, Jared still was ifting about how much I had in my account. When I talked to him before I submitted, that's why I submitted the budget in late.
Yeah.
He still was supposed to talk to someone, but I haven't heard back from him at all. But he thought it was in the three thousand range of what I had left over.
I think it's down on the audit or press to hear it out.
I know, it's been confusing year after year. We don't seem to be able to, because some of my stuff, this stuff comes out before June and some of it doesn't come out till after and stuff comes, all my fin- all my revenue comes in before June and for some reason it just never seems to get transferred over the way.
How do you feel about having a real budget like everybody else? Like a recreation budget. Okay, so your budget's fifteen thousand and you're, all your money comes in here. It's written out to the town. It flows right through here. And everything gets paid out there. There's no, you don't have to pick stuff up. You don't have to. It's all right there, like everyone else's budgets.
But I end up with a surplus every year that would go to town and.
Yes.
Yeah.
But you wouldn't worry about picking things up and.
I still would have to go and just get my, all my supplies and stuff.
Well, yeah, I know, but it would still come, you know, it would be, I think it would be easier to, um, read if the budget was like a real budget, you know, like a regular budget. Say your whole budget that you'd spend out would be fifteen thousand and all you pay or everything, just like it's written on this paper and everything comes out of where it's supposed to. And what goes in, goes in, and that's what you have, I guess is what I'm saying. Now, I know that you're self-sufficient.
My problem is that I don't know how many kids I'm gonna have from year to year. So if you put, if, if I looked at this year's budget and then I come to the next, it's the spring and I end up with another eight, ten kids or more, that, that increases my sal- it increases my wages, that increases everything.
Could you max yourself out? So you had a regular budget, like say you only gonna take so many kids per year. I'm just trying to make.
Right, I know what you're saying. And yes, you could, but I also don't. I've been staying in a certain amount of, no, this year's, this year was down some. Last year I was, I mean, the year I was out that I missed it, like I got injured, it was up some, so I actually hired another counselor because I brought it up another eight kids. So I hate to say those, you know, when we get to that date and the date isn't the cutoff date and all of a sudden I'm over, I can't bring you in, but even though, cause it would pay, they would pay for themselves, is what I'm saying. If I take the money in, it does pay for the expenses out. But my expenses out end up being more. Like right now, I have that buffer of X amount of money left in my account, so I know that if I charge the X amount of money and my other expenses don't go up any more than what I figured in, I can hang on.
I know. It just always seems so confusing at the end of the year, trying to figure out how much money you have left and where it goes and make sure everything is posted in the right area. I was just thinking, if you have a real budget.
I don't know. Everybody thought that I should go this way and that's why I did. You know, it was kinda like.
Well, maybe it's just food, the thought for next year.
There's several people, you know, selectmen and stuff said, this is the way you should go because you have so much revenue coming in and, you know, it's a long time.
Most departments have a lot of revenue coming in and then it goes back into.
Right.
You know, but your budget would be a lot higher also, just to cover, just in case.
Right, but then I'm looking at it, is it Tom, is it Tom gonna have to vote on his budget and I'm gonna be, oh, so the town's gonna be looking at, why am I gonna give the rec department sixteen thousand or twenty thousand dollars?
Well, if you explained it, I think that they'd be okay.
I don't think they would.
I don't think not.
I don't know. I'm just saying that as a, as a person who votes, I would be like, what the heck is this? Why am I paying for these kids to go to summer camp? When in real actuality, they're not because the income's coming in. I guess that's just, you know, from my perspective is what I would say. I mean, I think it's a great idea and I'd love to do it for paperwork, but I also don't want it, all of a sudden it gets voted down and I don't have a summer camp because of that.
Well, maybe just because, maybe it's okay this way only because you just do summer camp. I guess maybe if it was year round, it would be a little different probably, you know, if we had a year round rec.
Oh, I love to see that.
Full-time rec and constantly had, you know.
Is there a revenue report available?
Oh, sure there is.
Well, what, how would that reflect?
I don't know. I can't.
I would say that, that'd be the way to go.
I mean, I have a revenue report.
Make sure that's mentioned at the public hearing.
Right, I guess it's not, cause I.
How much revenue you're bringing in.
I guess my thought is.
Happen to bring in for the last year.
I guess my thought is, I understand that, but I also know that eighty percent of people who vote in this town don't go to the public meetings and they come in and they vote. And, you know.
But it will be published.
Cause I hear every day, like, how come this, this department's asking for this much money? Not realizing that they have revenue coming in. The same with, why don't you ask for money? It's cause I have, I'm a revenue funded.
Or else it suggests that you do a, do a little write-up in, uh, on the, uh, town website. Show your records, you know, that way.
Yeah, I never figured out how to do that. I, everybody keeps saying, what's the town report? I never had to do that.
There must be somebody in the office here could help you with that.
It's one more thing that I don't get paid to do. I'm sorry, but I'm a must, I'm an hourly employee and it's like. It's just, this is, even, this wasn't even part of my jo- job description, doing the budget. This all changed. And I don't mind doing it, but it's like, I don't know how to do something.
I've been heading town does a budget.
Right, but they're not hourly employees either. Like I, you know, I mean, I'm just six weeks a year.
We have some other hourly paid people.
I mean, I don't mind doing it. I just don't know even how to even approach doing any of that kind of stuff.
No, that's okay. I'm just, you know.
If you get help from the office, is what I'm trying to say.
You're probably correct, you know, because it's not year round. It's probably just easier to do it this way where it's only just the summer camp. If it was year round, then I think we'd have to do it a whole different process.
Right. I mean, I don't mind this way. It's just, unfortunately, the town, the thing switches in the end of June and we, you know, Jared and I were trying to figure out how to hold things and stuff to have it all be in one year. We just can't figure that out.
You gotta move it.
He's gonna be moved. Right.
Yeah.
And that's where we got into, because it was such a mess from when he took it over. So hopefully it'll be better. Just, you know, keep thinking that and, you know. Each treasurer tells me that's gonna change and every time I give him a treasurer, I end up in a mess again. Cause he's saying I have X amount of money. I think I have X amount of money and it's happened, it happens every year. So I don't know how to fix that, I guess is.
I think maybe one thing that we maybe will do, we'll have to ask Jordan is, you know, each month, when you're starting, really starting to take money in.
Which is in May.
Is have him give you a revenue that's posted, so you can go back and check and make sure everything that's come in here is posted, posted in the right spot. To make sure that is your money and it didn't, it went where it was supposed to go. Cause that's, that could be part of the problem too, who knows, I mean, you know.
Yeah, cause I get all those donations from businesses and that's, like, I don't know if they always get posted and I do try to, I do keep, she does give me a revenue report and I do check it off. And I did have some that had to be moved from Georgie's to mine and that kind of stuff. This has happened.
Yeah, cause it can be, it's really easy.
I know. I mean, anything you think will work, I, I'm willing to try it. I just don't sure.
Yeah.
Where to go from there.
I'm okay with it, okay? Paul, you okay with it?
Yep.
Perfect, thank you.
Alright.
For your hard work.
So, do I have to go in front of budget committee? Where I'm not asking for money?
We're gonna have Jordan copy it. He'll give it to them and they'll review it.
And let me know?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't call. Okay. And I can increase my wages for the minimum wage increase, right?
Yeah, we don't have a choice, so.
Okay, well, I just wanna make sure that's in writing, cause one time I, they were telling me I could and then when I got to the, to July, they wouldn't let me increase my wages. I just wanna make sure that I'm all set with that.
That's all figured in your budget, so yeah.
Okay.
Perfect.
Great. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Want me quickly do these two abatements?
Yes. Can I just ask, did you just excuse her from coming in front of budget committee?
No, I didn't excuse her. I, I don't know.
Go before the budget committee, cause I'm sure they'll have questions.
Well, and it's even if we don't have questions, that's why we're there, to protect the people from crazy budgets without a second set of eyes.
Part of the process for everybody else.
Can I tell you?
I have an item that I think I'm gonna have to bring up from executive. We'll have to probably discuss it to make sure it's okay to do it in executive. So I suggest we do an executive session and then if it turns out that it's not, then we go right out of it. You guys will go along with it. It's an employee issue.
Excuse me. So plane board didn't know if you guys were gonna be joining us at all for the marijuana discussion.
I always saw things we need to go over, so.
I'd like to do it if we don't have too often much going on.
Considering they're waiting for a date.
Yeah. We're trying to get some stuff through over there too.
Well, I know. We just wanted one executive session, so go ahead, if you want to.
I can make it a shorter executive session.
Okay.
You wanna do that? So I'm over there with all the executive session.
Second.
Four oh five six eight.
Well, where's, where's?
Personnel issues, Roy.
Uh, she won't be taking notes on.
No, but I have to write down, we're going through executive session. What time is it?
May, that's a good question, please.
Sure.
Did you get a chance to discuss from last night, anything?
I, I dealt with one thing for, with Jordan.
Okay.
I also had to discuss with these guys here something else.
Alright, if, if, just kind of a little reminder, something, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, but I was already on it.
What time is it?
Alright, so did you, you made the motion?
I made a motion. Will you get a second on it?
Yep.
Yes.